And good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for November first, two thousand twenty-two. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here. Thank you very much. Item number two, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, approval of the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, are there any corrections, changes? Councilor Brennan?
I'll make a motion to approve the November first agenda.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Contreras. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number four, consent business. Any changes, corrections, deletions, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Councilor Lehman?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Second was by Councilor Whiting. Any other further discussion? Before we vote, we would read the consent agenda as stated into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for one November of two thousand twenty-two. Four A one approves the city council meeting minutes for eighteen October of two thousand twenty-two. Four A two approves downtown road closures for Holiday Fest two thousand twenty-two on Saturday, three December. Four A three adopts ordinance O two thousand twenty-two, tac zero-two-five, amending section one-one-four, tac one, excuse me, point one-six of the Shakopee City Code, removing restrictions pertaining to Sunday alcohol beverage sales. Four A four approves the joint powers agreement with Scott County for assessment of city properties for two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-seven. And four B one adopts resolution R two thousand twenty-two, tac one thirty-five, in appreciation to firefighter Mark Brandon in recognition of his retirement and honoring him for twenty years of service to the city.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you very much. I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number five. Now, I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda tonight. On an item not on the agenda. Mr. Reynolds, have we received any electronic communication?
No, sir.
None. We would move ahead then to item number six, which is business removed come from consent. There is none. We would move ahead then to seven A, which is a public hearing modification of a spending plan for certain TIF districts. Councilor Brennan?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? That motion passes. Public hearings now open. Mr. Kurski will present. Welcome.
A copy of the spending plan with the changes proposed by our attorney when it went and got published online, somehow accepted all the changes, but the highlighted areas in red are the recommended changes from our outside counsel at Dorsey. Mr. Reiner and I had a meeting with them and reading through our TIF plan and all of our existing TIF districts. He is probably the state's leading authority on TIF districts and suggested we make these changes, so here we are to make these changes.
Questions of staff?
Couple.
Councilor Lehman?
Actually, I've got a bunch of questions. I don't know, do I just go down the line or?
Yep.
Do, can we get a list of when the listed TIF districts are scheduled to decertify? And then how many, how much remains on each one before decertification?
Yep, we can get to that.
And then, you know, we talked about some of these would be decertifying early because they're above what the projections were on valuation.
Yep, RAR in fact is in the process of being decertified.
And then, I'm curious to what, do we have anything worked up for what the requirements would be for eligibility, locations? Would we have to create TIF areas for areas that we're using TIF dollars toward? And is there a repayment schedule on loans? If there is, do we have a policy for that? So, I guess, kind of like, a lot to digest in a short period of time.
So, Mayor and council, this was approved back in March, so this basically, the state changed the legislation to allow any particularly administrative funds that we have for all the districts to be used within those districts for other projects. And so, the uses allowed by statute are the changes we made tonight. So, job retention, job creation, commercial development or redevelopment, development of any housing, including but not limited to market rate, affordable multifamily townhomes, single-family units, and improvement of existing community-owned or utilized buildings and facilities. So, any project would have to come back to you, and so, it's money that we already have from these districts that's in administration. I think, based on the pooling that we have right now, it's about half a million dollars that we have that has to be spent within these districts.
Follow-up question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Follow-up question. So, this is not the actual tax revenue that comes in from the project and then goes back into the infrastructure for the project? This is the administrative fees that were charged to the project. Is that correct?
Mayor and council, that's correct. So, it's between one and ten percent, depending on which district it is.
So, when we charge an administrative fee for a TIF district, we're charging that to cover our staff time, I would assume, in legal departments and finance departments and stuff like that. So, if we're not going to utilize them funds to pay for that service, who's paying for that service now?
So, Mayor and council, there are excess pooling funds from all these districts, so some of these districts require a lot of time and some of these districts don't require that much time, so the excess pooling funds is what we're talking about.
Mr. Reynolds?
So, essentially, what we're talking about is that we go into a TIF district and we set a number that we believe that we're going to need funds for the administration. We don't use all those funds. So, now we have this money. And now, we need to use it, and the state says that we can use it internally for projects in that TIF district. We can't really hold on to the funds ourselves because we have, we can only charge for what we are using.
Where did the money originally come from?
It comes from the TIF district.
Okay.
And that's why it should go back into the TIF district.
Correct.
And that's what we're doing.
So, so, Mayor and council, in the past, you haven't been able to do it, but this, the state changed the section, which is four sixty-nine, one seventy-six, sub four N, under the Act, to allow communities to, instead of basically giving the money back to the state, to actually be able to use it within the districts.
And then, to follow up on your other question, counselor, as you're well aware, there are districts decertified in two thousand and they're back on the, two thousand twenty-two, they're back on the tax rolls. Most of these districts are ahead of, ahead of schedule to decertify, so the next scheduled ones roughly are Sanamar, often twenty, be a taxpayer in twenty-four. Mr. Reynolds?
I just want to be clear, they've always been on the tax rolls. And maybe I should help explain to the general public what a TIF is. Essentially, you've got a property that prior to development or redevelopment has this much tax that is paid in. And then, after development, there is a substantial increase of tax. They're always going to continue to pay this tax. It's the increase, the increment that we're talking about, that is, 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 is set aside and then used for, in our cases, mostly infrastructure, city infrastructure.
But like, RAR had a, already a value before they expanded, and that got paid in.
And that keeps being paid into the system.
Same with Canterbury.
And the same with Canterbury, for all properties.
Right. Councilor Brennan?
So, what you're saying is that a TIF is based on property value and not on debt or money that's owed. It's a property value, so it's the difference between what was original at the time that the TIF was established and then what it is at the time it's decertified. So, if these funds were used, if there was any funds that we decided to use, it, it wouldn't pay off the debt of the TIF.
There's no debt.
There's, it's a value.
That's, that's a fundamental misunderstanding of what a TIF is. There is no debt. What you've got is the increased tax increment that normally would be coming into the general levy. But what we've done is we've chosen to take that and set it aside and use it for infrastructure. The Fourth Avenue TIF is a perfect example. It's easy to understand. By the way, it has nothing to do with Amazon. Amazon doesn't even own the building. The building is actually owned by USAA. The, the money for the Fourth Avenue TIF actually went to the county to repay them for rebuilding Fourth Avenue. But what happened with that particular TIF is, is that the money, you had the, the, the normal price of that open land, then you have the building on top of it. That money is then used to pay for Fourth Avenue. And then, once it's done paying for Fourth Avenue, which by the way, all residents would have to pay for, but no, we're making Amazon, the Amazon property where Amazon is, pay for that, so the residents don't have to pay for that. And then, once that's done, all of the increment then comes back into the city coffers.
So.
Councilor Lehman?
Am I understanding this, that you said these dollars would have to be used in a TIF district? But this says it can be used wherever.
Mayor and council, our recommendation is to use it in a TIF district, and that's what our attorney's recommendation is. So, again, those projects have to come back to you, so it's up to you. We're not spending any money tonight. All this is doing is authorizing a spending plan that we're going to send to the state, which has already been sent to them, but we're amending it per our TIF attorney's recommendation.
And then, the last piece of information I'd like to see would be the interfund loans that we used for some of these TIF districts. Where they're standing? Are they paid back in full, partially? What's the status on these? And, and there is debt involved because we sold ten million dollars worth of bonds for Canterbury, and we're carrying that, we're paying that debt off with money coming in from part of the taxes above the empty field, if you will, to pay for that debt. But if something happens, it's, that debt is on to full faith and credit of taxpayers, according to the experts that stood before us and said that.
And Mayor and council, we have adequate reserves on that particular debt, so that if something does happen, we have money set aside to cover that.
But, Councilor Lehman, I think that in your discussion on social media, that the, the property doesn't pay for
Services.
Services.
Correct. It's not allowed to by state law.
But some of these already have, like in the RAR example, already had a, a big base before the increment of expansion. Same with Canterbury. They're, they're using that. And again, all of this in the City of Shakopee, for our TIF districts, the increment capture goes for infrastructure within the district and therefore lightens the burden for the entire tax base because the increment is paying, and the RAR is, RAR is an example, Canterbury is an example, of paying for infrastructure that the increment is paying for. They're already paying a tax, the base tax, for what is not the new development. And we've had a lot of success stories. The RAR, which you voted for, I'm not sure where you were on Amazon, but that gave us all the Fourth Avenue. It was a county project, not a city project.
And, and County Highway eighty-three.
Right.
Eighty-three, yeah.
And then, several of these other ones that were older, so Sanamar and All Saints will be coming off, I think, in the fall of next year, at the end of next year, to be on the tax rolls in twenty-four. Is that Nate will correct?
Yeah, Mayor and council, just to add some clarification to this, having gone through the process with Michael. So, this is a temporary statute change as a result of the, as a result of the pandemic. Basically, they came up with this temporary pooling that you can do, which would be for us, it would just be remaining unspent admin dollars from these TIF districts we've already had established, so it's nothing that we're extending any TIF districts in any shape or form by doing this. But it does allow us to pool those unspent admins together to be able to do a bigger project. As Michael alluded to, it's about five hundred thousand, and it would cover any remaining admin that we have not spent through the end of this year. And at that point in time, those funds would be pushed into a, a separate fund and available to spend on any project within the plan and meets the definition of our criteria in the plan, which at the very minimum would be job creation for construction jobs. So, you would have, it would, any, 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 I guess, any spending would go through you guys to approve? So, you would still have that, but that's.
And in void of this agreement that we did earlier this spring, and now we're amending the spend plan, I believe without that, excess monies would go straight to the county. Is that correct?
It would, it would be returned to the county and then, and it would be at the end, once the TIF district is decertified. So, it could, for some of these that still have years left, it would be down the road, and then redistributed based on.
Councilor Whiting?
So, this is just to carry over from the same conversation we had in March.
Yeah.
Correct, council.
So, we're just adding a couple of changes to the wording, the, of the, the spending plan that the state's gone through and made for us changing, taking out the word high wage, but leaving the word job creation, job, and adding job retention, commercial development, redevelopment, or redevelopment language. And then, another part that says add improvement of existing commercially-owned or utilized buildings and facilities. Just a little verbiage from the lawyers, you said, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilor Brennan?
And this, this corrected amended copy will be online and available to people?
Mayor and council, you already, the corrected copy is online. We just gave you the changes highlighted in red.
Okay.
Okay. More discussion of staff with staff? If not, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward and make comment on this, a spend plan amendment, modification to the spend plan in certain TIF districts, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome, and speak into the mic. Welcome.
Sure, most of you know me up there. First time actually coming to a meeting, sitting in front of you guys, watching several online and stuff, though. So, great questions by all of you for the TIF district, what they want to spend the money on. Councilor Brennan, you brought up the owed money, which we've discussed before, like, you wouldn't necessarily pay back or pay off the TIF what's owed. You brought up statutes for the state, which they've covered, and which they've amended per the pandemic, whatever. But then, that same conversation, their first line says you should pay off bonds first before reinvesting that money into other projects. So, I'm just curious why you wouldn't take care of your bonds and what's owed instead of starting in other projects or extending TIF districts. It's very vague on what they tell you you can and can't do. So, I don't know if that's the state's problem, figuring out what to do with TIF districts. I just feel that it'd be better for the taxpayers to pay off bonds that taxes go towards to pay because we're accumulating interest on those, so why wouldn't you pay off bonds instead of making more TIF districts or subsidizing housing for construction companies or giving out loans? I don't see the city being a bank. We shouldn't be giving out loans to companies that can go to the bank and get a loan. So, brings in a whole, whole realm of things that I personally don't agree with. So, I guess, I, if I were in your shoes, I would say, why not pay off the bonds and take care of what's already owed instead of spending it on future projects that wouldn't have to be put into the calendar until two thousand twenty-five if I read the paperwork correctly and everything? So, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and make comment on this? This is a public hearing. Seeing none? Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Councilor Lehman?
Second.
I have a motion to close public hearing in a second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? That motion is passed. Public hearing is now closed. Mr. Reynolds?
I just want to be clear on what we're actually doing tonight. The spending plan has already been passed. That was done in March, I believe. What we're doing is changing, oh, probably less than twenty words, by removing high wage and adding the words job retention, commercial development or redevelopment, and improvement of existing commercially-owned or utilized building and facilities. That's what we're doing. We're not establishing the plan. That's already been done. We're simply changing some of the aspects and what the plan can be used for.
Councilor Whiting?
So, I'll make that motion to approve resolution R two thousand twenty-two dash one-three-four, approving a spending plan for certain tax increment financing districts located in the City of Shakopee.
A second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Brennan. Discussion? Councilor Contreras, did you have any questions?
Nope, all my questions were answered. Thank you.
I just feel this is a modification of the spending plan that was already approved that we talked about, of the administrative aspect of it. And any bonding that, I don't believe there's many bonds in, in the whole, what do we have, nine TIF districts? I don't think there are technically a lot of bonds for that. But, you know, that's, taking that money out of the administrative expense and then reinvesting it back in your community in those TIF districts, and I think that offers enhanced value, which therefore may make the value go up, so the, it decertifies even faster, so, kind of my comments. But there is a motion and a second on the table, Councilor Brennan?
That was, that was a really good point. It does, it, it would increase the value of the TIF district so that it potentially pays off earlier.
Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Thank you very much. Item number eight, let's move in recess to our EDA meeting. Councilor Lehman?
May I make a motion to recess to the EDA meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess to the EDA. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? That motion carries. Are we're in recess. Madam Chair, Madam President, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I call to order the November first Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting. If staff could please note the roll. Number two on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Lehman, make some motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And there's a second by Whiting. All those in all those that are in agreement, please stay on. There you go. Please say aye. Those, those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Number three on the agenda is the consent business, and on the consent business is the EDA minutes. Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion by Lehman and a second by Contreras to approve the consent agenda. All those in?
Favor, say aye.
Why is that?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Let's see if I can do it again. Number four on the agenda is the general business, and we're holding another public hearing on the modification for the spending plan. If, a motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Mars?
Allow for a motion to open the public hearing?
There's a second by Contreras. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Public hearing is open. And who's presenting? Mr. Kurski?
Madam Chair.
Is there any difference in this?
Madam Chair, if I may, since we've already had this discussion with staff and everything, I think the proper thing would be to see if there's anybody in the public that would want to address and move on.
Is there anybody who would like to comment on this? Okay. Is there a motion?
Should open the public hearing.
Yeah, we did. Is there a is there a motion to close the public hearing? Ms. Contreras?
Yep, motion to close the public hearing.
A second by Mars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And is there any, Ms. Contreras?
Yes, I will make a motion to, let me just get it here, adopt resolution E two thousand twenty-two dash zero-zero-one, approving a spending plan for certified tax increment financing districts located in the City of Shakopee.
Been a motion and a second by Mars. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Number five on the agenda is the EDA bill list. Is there any questions regarding the EDA bill list? Okay. Number six on the agenda is adjournment. Mr. Mars?
Madam President, I'll offer adjournment of the EDA to Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M.
Second by Whiting to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
We will reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for November first, two thousand twenty-two. We have just completed our EDA portion of that. We're going to move ahead then to item number ten, general business. Item eleven, eleven A, the city bill list is in, in front of us for our review. Any questions, comments on the city bill list? Any none? Then we would move ahead to eleven B, liaison administration report. And Councilor Brennan?
And the spec didn't, didn't happen last night. It will happen next week, so I'll have more on that. I attended the county commissioner meeting, and there was a presentation on the drug court and the vet court. Officer Jamie Pearson represented Shakopee P D and talked about the work that we are doing to keep those individuals on task and what they're supposed to be doing according to the drug court. So, that was good information. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor Lehman.
I didn't have a liaison meeting since the last meeting. I have one Friday.
All right, great. Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got to attend cleanup day, help out a little bit. It wasn't as packed as in the past, but got a lot of people through there pretty quick and quite an efficient staff out there, so thanks for all the, their help. Got a lot of people through there pretty quick and, uh, quite an efficient staff out there, so thanks for all the, their help. Uh, the twenty-sixth was, uh, MVTA, uh, had our, some regular business, uh, talked about a technology update, kind of in addition to the. CAD AVL system, more of a, a yard management system for keeping track of the buses fueling and washing and maintenance programs, kind of. Adding on, even to, so drivers know where their bus is located out in the, out in the yard, so. Uh, just adding on to the, the current system they have. Uh, month, month over month growth in our, uh, quarter three ridership reports, so, uh. Moving up towards those pre-pandemic levels, not quite there yet, but, uh, getting there, so that's all I have.
Counselor, thank you very much. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a liaison, but I do have some events I attended, which on the twelfth, the ribbon cutting to the Shakopee florist. On the seventeenth, the groundbreaking of Bravison Badger Hill, yay, and on the twenty-second cleanup day, and again, that was fun.
Well, thank you. Um, for my mayor's report, and, uh, uh, I, I got interviewed for the, uh, Southern Valley Alliance. They're in the middle of their, uh, capital contribution, uh, campaign for their new building, so, and I also attended, uh, cleanup day. And, uh, great to see the residents out there, and it certainly wasn't as busy. I think spring is always carries the day, but. I am very pleased that we do both, uh, because it really gives a, a good opportunity, so. Um, that is my, uh, liaison report, uh, administration report.
Nothing from administration, sir.
All right. Moving ahead then, item number twelve, uh, other business. Uh, Counselor Lehman, any other business?
None, Mayor.
Anybody else? Yes, city clerk.
Um, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to bring up, um, the canvassing, uh, meeting that we have, uh, I know the administrators brought to your attention. Um, after the election, I did speak to the county about trying to have us meet on the fifteenth at a regular council meeting. Uh, they said that they would try to do the best that they could to get the information we would need after the election to do that. However, at this point, they think that it would absolutely be the sixteenth that we would have to meet. Um, just because of all that they are going to have to get together for us to get that report, so. I think, uh, for reporting or requiring, um, agno, uh, letting the public know when we're going to meet for public meetings. Um, I think it would be wise for us to automatically, uh, notice that we will be meeting on the sixteenth. I just need to know what time you would all like to meet so that I can make sure that I notice that for the public.
And that would probably be a single item.
Yes, it would be the only thing that we would be meeting for is the canvassing report. Yep. So I need a consensus from you when you all want to meet.
So we normally meet at seven, but there certainly with one item, we could meet, uh, touch earlier, five o'clock, six o'clock, counselors?
I'm open.
I'm open too.
Okay.
Shall we say six o'clock?
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
Yep, six o'clock.
All right.
Sixteenth it is?
Yep, yep. November sixteenth at six o'clock, and I'll make sure that I notice it, and I will send you a reminder.
Wednesday, the sixteenth at six P M. here in the council chamber.
Correct.
To receive the canvassing report.
Yes, thank you very much.
If it's not available then, from the county?
They will do everything in their power to get, to get it to us.
Is that a time sensitive document?
Yes, we have a deadline by stage statute.
We have a window that we need to, okay, I got.
Yes.
All right.
What is that window?
Um, it is three to ten days after the election, so, um, the county is actually meeting on the seventeenth for their canvassing. So they're on a deadline. They've already advertised their meeting, so that's why the sixteenth will work for us.
Providing that their information is available, so, uh, do we want?
They will, they know.
We want to be safe and go like the eighteenth or something, or?
Um, I've already talked to them. I'm, I'm pretty confident that we'll get it, so.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, um. With no other business here, um. Then I would entertain, uh. Yes, sir. Jerry, would you like to please come forward?
Can I address you guys, because I'm, I'm.
Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Thank you, Jerry.
I'm a half an hour late, forty-five minutes. I fell asleep, but there was a couple of things that I wanted to address you guys on. I should have been here for, if it's not on the agenda. Number one is, in the past, I could watch city council meetings, I could watch park meetings, I could watch. Planning commission meetings on fifteen and sixteen, and it seems like the last couple of years, I, either I turn it on at the wrong time or you're not airing it. Is there a reason? Am I missing it, or are you?
We, we start at seven o'clock?
No, 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 I mean when, reruns, reruns. I'm not getting any reruns.
You can access, so tonight's meeting is live on, but I think you have to wait till tomorrow at about ten or noon. That gets turned around, and then that's at your disposal twenty-four seven, once it gets posted.
Mayor?
Not on fifteen or sixteen?
Yeah, what I, what I, Mayor, what I think he's saying is, and I've noticed this myself, is it's, it's been shifted, the reruns have been shifted from their fifteen, sixteen channel to, I think it's YouTube, isn't it? A lot of them are all on like YouTube.
Why, 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 we, we have a stage, two stations, why are you shifting it?
Or they're also available on the city's.
Right, I apologize.
Okay, somebody eighty years old is not capable of surfing everything.
You go online and look at our agenda?
No.
It's on our website.
No, I don't know. I was just curious. You don't have to give me an answer.
I don't, I apologize. I was thinking about online at.
Years ago, it was fifteen and sixteen.
Okay.
I'd flip it on and I'd get.
Maybe we get some further information.
Okay, second thing is, last, I don't know, last week or week before, when you had the fellow here from the liquor store that violated your, your ordinance. You guys really were in a dilemma, you know, you do have this here on, on the books that you got to close them up for six days. My, my question, sitting at home with my wife, was liquor stores were essential business for two years. Churches were not. Now you just locked up a essential business for six days. The governor said that, you said the state of Minnesota issues the governor a liquor license with the city. The governor said liquor stores are closed. Because they're essential, and so. What should override what on this, your, in this question? I mean, who has more power, the essential or your ordinance?
Well.
It seemed like the whole state of Minnesota locked up churches.
Right.
But not liquor stores.
Well.
So I think, you know, I don't know if you have egg on your face or not over this. I know you don't have to comment if you don't want to.
Well, I appreciate your comments on this.
Okay, but it's something, you know, okay, I, um, Eden Prairie, if, or Eden Prairie, if somebody violates. The clerk or the waitress goes to court and gets fined, not the business. That's, because I got a daughter that works over there, and that's how they handle it. I'm not saying they're right or you're right. But it's just another way of looking at it. I owned the businesses for thirty-seven years. You can train, train, train. You go to the bathroom, you don't know what the hell is happening at that counter. That's just the life, and I think things are a lot worse now than they were ten years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. So that's all I got. Well, thank you for letting me speak. Good night.
Thank you.
Um, so I would entertain a motion, uh, to adjourn to November fifteenth. I will. Tell all our residents to remember to get out and vote. We have voting early till the seventh. Otherwise, on the polls, at the polls on the eighth, and, uh, some important elections moving forward, so. Counselor Brennan?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, November fifteenth, at seven o'clock.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes. We are adjourned at seven forty.